All right, we'd like to call the March sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-four Select Board Meeting to Order. And Article number one is reorganization, and we're looking for appointment of a chairman. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Alicia Mullay.
Okay, we have more than a second. Um, any other nominations? All right, the nominations are closed, and um, all those in favor of Alicia say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. I'm gonna hand the meeting over to the, the old boss that's in the new boss, right?
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have, uh, now we need to nominate Vice Chairman. I nominate David Mills. Any other nominations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Um, any need for executive session? Do we have anything?
Why don't we wait till, no, nothing really, no.
Um, any need to amend the agenda? If we were gonna wait, hold off of the appointments to next meeting when we have a full board, would we amend the agenda now instead of moving on it after? Okay.
Well, actually, what you would do is at the appointments, you would just table it then, yeah.
Then I could table it, okay, all right. Any other need, so any need to amend the agenda?
So, what folks here for public comment section, that's it, yeah.
Well, it's on there, so no, yeah. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
I'm second to it.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Um, okay, so now we do, we have in our appoint, our appointments, um, which I would like to table until we have a full board, if that's okay with everyone else. Yep, okay.
Fine with me.
Fine with me.
Not gonna affect anything to this meeting anyways.
No, I don't believe so, so. Do we need to make a, do we need to vote on that, or just, we do, okay?
We do, yeah.
I make a motion that we table those until we have a full board. We need discussion, I need a second. Okay, we need to, because I don't know how many months ago I resigned from Rutland Regional, but they still got me on there.
Oh.
So you need to take me off, put Donna in as primary.
So we did send that, yeah, we did send that to them, but we'll change that.
Yeah, 'cause I've been the alternate for that thus far.
Yeah. We did that at a meeting not that long ago, so.
Okay.
Right, well, I got, I got a letter on it too, so it didn't get to...
Oh, there's a disconnect there somewhere?
There's a disconnect somewhere, yeah.
David, is there anything on here, though, that may have to be addressed prior to our next board meeting? Any, anything? That's what I'm wondering.
Well, I mean, if they-
I actually have no power until they're appointed.
Well, that's, I feel like Ann did maybe make mention of, um, our ambulance rep, would you think that that, would you know?
I don't see any there, but I didn't know about the-
If that would be time sensitive?
Well, what about our animal control officer? I think that one should be appointed.
Yeah.
'Cause we could have a problem with that one.
If you don't do a particular one, you can't do a thing until we have it.
Right, okay.
So, but isn't the animal control officer also, or, I'm sorry, the health officer also has to be appointed by the state, so they've got their annual certification anyway?
Yeah, and I think these, as far as I understand it, these people all maintain their positions until we reappoint at the next meeting.
That's my question.
There's, there's no, 'cause we were just looking this up too, there's nothing in the statute for appointing what the deadline is.
Yeah.
Some towns do it like June, for June third, if July one, so.
So, we're good then.
So I think we're, yeah, I think we're good then, okay.
So that answers that.
Yes, okay. Um, all right, uh-
Need to vote.
Oh, sorry. We had a motion and a second?
To table it, yes.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, anything on the, uh, meeting minutes to February twenty-first? I saw nothing, nope.
I haven't heard of it.
No, that's right. All right, Town Manager's report.
Okay, um, Plains Road Sewer Line Project went out to bid the day after our last Select Board Meeting. We actually have a pre-bid meeting starting here tomorrow, uh, morning, and, um, we'll be going on-site, which is right out the door here. Um, and, um, bid opening will be on March twenty-eighth here at the town office as well. Um, excuse me, my throat's really dry in here. We'll be taking delivery of the Bobcat Z turn mower later this week, that was the one that was approved at the, well, we talked about at the last meeting. Um, the parts have arrived sooner than expected for the backhoe, so the Highway Department's already started, uh, putting the new, uh, thing on the boom, the new part on the boom that split. So, we're just waiting for the hydraulics to come back on that, and we'll be done. Um, we did have a water line break on Blanchard Ave next to Tom's house last week. Um, unfortunately, we had to run an excavator today, 'cause our, our, uh-
It broke.
Backhoe's down, so, but it was repaired in-house by the Water Department and Highway guys. Um, and the boil water notice has been lifted, so. Um, and in your packet, it was requested, I think Mark asked for this a couple times, um, if we had anything, was the Highway Department Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Schedule. So this has been around for a while, it looks like it started in twenty sixteen, so just put that in there for you guys, in a reference to have, and then when we're talking about stuff or something comes up, we can see if it's on the list or not, and, you know, Chad and I'll certainly try to keep this as, as updated as we can, but, so that's just for you. Um, Rec News, Rec Director attended a lifeguard training course in Massachusetts on the sixth and seventh. Be offering classes to the public, um, and additional revenue to the Rec Department, and it's all ages for, um, classes there. Tai Chi Training on the, on April twentieth and twenty-second, seen for seniors, additional training for adults and children. Let's see, what else, basketball season is wrapped up, fifth and sixth grade teams participated at the Otter Valley Jamboree, organized by OV, Pittsford and Brandon Rec. Teams are also attending the Glodzik Tournament. Pittsburgh Indoor Flea Market and Yard Sale has been organized to benefit the Pittsburgh First Response. Townwide Yard Sale's been scheduled for June eighth. Low Geter Soccer Week Program coming to Pittsburgh for Lothrum Students Free of Cost, sponsored by Vermont Soccer Association. Um, Liz and Anna been creating an application for Pittsburgh residents in need of reduced rate scholarships for summer camp, we actually were reviewing that today. And, uh, archery in Pittsburgh Youth Disc Golf coming in the spring as additional rec activity, so we've been busy in the Rec Department. And that's all I have this evening.
No, the TV wasn't on, I didn't know that.
Recording in progress.
All right, Jeff might be waiting for us too, if he's here, so.
While we're waiting on that, did anybody have any questions for the Town Manager, or anything that he just said?
Oh, and there's some, just information from PD on stats for the month and traffic tickets.
Yep, bless you.
As you can see, I think, um, I think, uh, Arch Street was the high score. Yeah, at twenty-eight tickets this month, so they've been really, you know, going on that with, especially with, if they're on traffic duty for Beldens now too, you know, we can still run radar on that, which is good, so. Um, it's been, uh, Arch Street's been a racetrack, and we're slowing them down, so.
He was hitting them today, left and right.
Yeah, high score last Thursday was fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Yep, so.
On Arch Street?
It's, it's been pretty bad, um-
Means they're not stopping at that sign.
No, I know.
No, wait, I think we did three stop violation, stop sign violations last week, too, something like that, I'd have to, but Dave Sui has been really, really getting them, so. Yep, so. And Alicia actually, well, the Board, the Select Board actually got a thank you card from a-
We did.
Elm Street residents for, for us getting the speed limit dropped, so that was-
Yep.
Funny, at twenty-five miles an hour, I, when I stopped coming on to Route seven off the Depot Road. I can't believe anybody's doing twenty-five.
No.
It's thirty-five right there, right up the hill, it starts at twenty-five.
Yeah.
Tractor trailers row through there.
They're doing fifty.
So one, nobody's gotten killed.
I know, they are usually the worst offenders.
We tried, we tried to get that dropped down before it, till the Plains, Plains Road.
Tried getting the whole village district, and first, the first, 'cause it's the state's the ones that rode, and we got it, you know, we got a lot of it, but not all of it, but. I, when they did the traffic studies, there wasn't like the average speed on that, like forty-five miles an hour or something in that section that we were looking at, so in the thirty-five, it was pretty high, you know?
Yep.
So, well, we'll be getting, doing our eleven-eleven permit for the, the flashing speed limit signs, and we're doing the, the lights on the crosswalk at Kamut's too, the, like, what are they, the rapid beacon?
Yeah.
So when you push the button, they'll, they'll illuminate, so hopefully those help, the speed car has helped, I mean, we, you know, we watched to see what the high score is there, but it's, you know, it is slowing the cars down, but Greg's right, they do still come in-
I know.
Pretty hot, so.
All right, now we go on to public comments.
Do you want me to introduce this? So, this, this week, more than I've ever seen, and I know these folks are, have had issues in the past with, um, their, when their neighbors with junk, and now there's a rat issue, so. I did speak to one of the landers, unowners, I don't think is here tonight, Mike's not here, right? Um, okay, Aaron's here, okay, um, so-
Hi, I'm Nicole.
Hi.
Just an update, um, I know that Jeff had responded to Mike about the history at that property, um, this is the fourteen-twenty-one property, I believe. Um, that that did go to court in twenty-one, the town, that, that got dismissed for some reason, I, I don't know why, we'd have to look that up. So Jeff has got a, a notice of violation ready to go, we're trying to PD serve it because the person that owns the property doesn't live there. Um, and, um, Rich, our, our Health Officer, is going out there tomorrow to look at this, this vermin issue, and I'm sure we'll be issuing a health order, so that'll be coming to the board, we might have to do an emergency session for that, so.
Okay.
Just to give you a heads up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we'll see what we have to do if Department of Health needs to get involved after that, or whatever, so.
Is that at Artie Senior's house?
Yeah, which property is it?
Fourteen-twenty-eight is not Artie Junior.
Which one's the one, it's the one that has the coyote hanging in the front yard?
Oh, that's Artie, he's, um, my, my address is twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
So that was the twenty-seven eighty-three Fire Hill?
There you go, and I didn't realize that, that there was an issue there, but my dog has picked up two rats right across the road from his house.
So that's, that's, we're hoping to, um, and these folks, I know, live up there, and I actually spoke to Mike and said it'd be good if folks came to the board to-
Yep, okay.
You know, get the concern out there, so it's, it's on the, on public record and the-
The other side of that is, there's only thirteen unregistered vehicles at that house also.
Greg, you said your dog picked them up?
Yeah, they were dead. I don't know who got it first.
That, if they were poisoned, that can become a real issue with-
With your dog?
Yeah, no, he's okay, we just had the vet there today, he had those dogs.
Or anybody else's out there.
My son had a dead rat at his house, which is up behind my house. We've had dead rats, and I am just sick and tired of the zoning board can't do their job, or zoning administrator, who's gonna pay for rat control? That's my question.
Well, is there anything in the zoning dealing with rodents and pests?
So, it's not covered under zoning, but it is for help, for the Health Officer, so.
I'm gonna, I'll call you back.
And Rich is going up there tomorrow, I, I don't know how to make it happen any quicker, um, but. And, and Jeff did, did, when he responded to Mike this evening, he did say that, you know, with the court, with going to court, issuing the notice and going to court, it could take up to six months before junk is removed, because we, they, we need the court authority to do it. Um, if they don't come, we can issue a violation, I know most folks would just comply with the violation, problem solved. If they don't comply with the violation, which looks like this has happened before, it has to go to court, and then the court decides, so we just went through this with another property not that long ago. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate that it takes so long, but, like I said, it does look like it was done in twenty-one, and the court was not on our side, so.
So what about the thirteen vehicles that are just scattered around the yard?
That's the problem, Greg, you know, we can issue a zoning violation, and I think Jeff's on here, I think.
He is, he's on.
We can issue a zoning violation to come into compliance, and to force them, and if they say, no, we're not doing it, then we have to take it to court, we can't, we can't go up and move the cars on our own, it has to go through this judicial process.
Fines?
There are, and I think, well, one of the ones we just went to court for, the fines weren't even included, so we had to do an appeal to include the fines, so. And that's, that's in process now.
There's three properties on Fire Hill.
Yep, nine eighty-one, fourteen twenty-nine, and twenty-seven eighty-three.
The trailer next to Teresa's is now abandoned also.
I know there's one, no, I'm thinking of, yeah, is that the one, the one down on the bottom? We've, I've had chief go out because cars have been in the right-of-way of the road and had them move them, because it's dangerous, but, um, and that's all really that I can do, is if they're encroaching on, on town right-of-way, that we can have them removed, but. Um, so I don't know if Jeff has anything to add, or, I think he's here.
Yes.
He's there. Oh, there he is. But Jeff's, our zoning administrator's on, so I don't know if people have any questions for him.
When was the last time he was up?
Jeff, did you, you went up there today, didn't you? I can't hear you.
He's on mute.
Jeff, you're on mute, probably.
Yep. Your microphone's muted, Jeff.
Still muted.
There you go.
All right.
Okay.
Good evening, folks. So let me touch base on the three perpetrators on Fire Hill Road, everybody knows who they are. Everybody knows, I've been here nine years or less, and this problem was before I came. So, everybody knows this is kind of a persistent issue. Uh, the town unfortunately doesn't have, you know, the ultim, ultimatum to tell folks, we're going to confiscate your property, we're gonna condemn your property, there's a legal process for everything. And we try to, the two approaches that you can use is one to go through the judicial court, which is the ticket system, and two thousand and twenty-one, we're trying to save legal costs. So we went through the ticket system, and we did get complaints with two of the three property owners at that time, and Mike has an email from me that explains that the third property owner, uh, elected to appeal the ticket. And we waited six months to go to the judicial court system, which is the, the same court that your speeding tickets are heard on your, you know, motor vehicle violations and so on. The judicial court is used for motor vehicle violations, they do not like, uh, municipal violations, because it screws up their schedule. The average municipal, um, uh, the average judicial ticket for, uh, an auto-related hearing is six minutes. And so they schedule for ninety-six thousand hearings a year out of the Bennington, uh, out of the Bradlboro Office. When you get to an environmental court, uh, when you get to a, a municipal type issue, um, there's six minutes per case, uh, schedule goes out the window. We hope that the violator would either pay the fine and, and work with the town to move back, um, or, or we found that the judicial court jobs that I caught in, in the appeal, and no appetite for that. She basically, it was just not a good thing, I'll just put it that way, but she basically threw the court case out, uh, technicality. So I could have reissued another ticket, waited six months for another court hearing and so on. So when this came up again in two thousand and, late two thousand twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, by the way, it's been my experience that these kind of junk issues show up after the winter snow has melted, you know, and, and that's where we are. Most of these things come to a head this time of year, when you can see things through the brush and it's spring conditions. And the garbage that's been sitting on the back porch for six months is now starting to smell, and it's kind of obvious, and so on. Um, it's just the way the society seems to behave, not just in Pittsburgh, but public towns as well. Um, the option now, which was recommended by the town attorney, is to enforce in an environmental court, uh, to where the results are going to actually get a bona fide hearing, if necessary, or otherwise, we have a little bit more flexibility and a fair amount of say on the, on the results in terms of, and getting the money out of the person, um, is a different issue, but let's say, you know, it's prevailing in environmental court. Problem is, all the courts are backed up, so to get to that hearing process, you know, they start with a conversation after thirty days, and then the judge will get a handle on what's going on, and they'll probably give another thirty days in which for the offending party within the town to try to work it out. And then after ninety days, you know, and the arguments, the public's really getting the information that the judge makes, he's probably gonna be able, and the judge will say, um, all right, get ready for trial. Now, this is a very quick file for numbers, junk, so we're gonna try, so, those are the two options under the circuit. The, the junk ordinance that town has now is actually somewhat ambiguous on the issue of garbage. And the zoning issue, uh, the zoning ordinance has no, has been silent on the issue of junk garbage, and it's not enforced on it, it's open. We've been prudent, and hopefully this year, you know, and commission is going to be working on updating the zoning due to the housing, the regulations, the fireworks and so on, but all this based on-
So, excuse me, my name is Kelly Forrest.
Hi.
I'm, I live downhill from the people that we're talking to. Hi Jeff, I spoke with you today, um, I filed a State of Vermont Environmental Concern with the stench, the garbage, and the sewage that's being dumped into wetlands on the north side of that property, which is going to be seeping into the wetlands on my property, which ultimately will be ending, ending up into my water well, eventually, if we continue to let this happen. Have you guys done anything to contact the State of Vermont about this, all these violations? I ha, I left a phone number, and I haven't got, been responded to at all, and I just think it's, this is terrible.
Could, could I respond to that first, please? Um, I'm, I'm sorry, the first time I heard about your situation is this afternoon, a copy of an email. So what, did you actually speak with a Vermont Environmental Enforcement Officer?
I just filed the claim online.
Okay, so the response that you're asking about was the response from the state forthcoming?
Yeah, I don't know.
We're running a ministry, and unfortunately, Richard Bowman, our Health Officer, you know, is a key ingredient in this particular situation. Um, I don't, I don't know what the background on, on this particular case is, but I can tell you how it generally works with environmental state rules. So, so you can file a complaint with the state, um, it doesn't hurt to bring it up to the town, probably use it with the zoning administrator, which has, I think, more, a little bit of access with state environmental enforcement. But, and, and they will probably, if they get the paper, and there's a overflowing sewage issue, a wetland issue and so on, schedule us an inspection. They may not tell anybody that they're gonna drive by and take a look, you know, they tend to, to aggress it, I think, in a timely fashion. But follow-up action isn't much faster than the kind of schedule that we've got. I can explain, I, I mean, I've had some experiences other towns where they've done very egregious situations, their sewage gets straight by being into the river. And the environmental officer does his thing, forwards it to the state Attorney General for Prosecution, and they put it under their docket, or they say, no, that's not the level you're going to dedicate our resources, and it's a very frustrating thought. Um, but, and I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying frustrating, but it's wrong. But you, you have to start with basically filing a complaint, getting someone from the Agency of Natural Resources to go out and inspect, and then enforce state law. The town has no ability to enforce that.
Hey Jeff, this is John, this is John Ujir, I, I disagree with that, so everything I read online today with the wastewater department of the State of Vermont, you have to start with a health inspection and a citation from a town to get the state involved. So is the town health inspector going to look for sewage discharge into a wetlands and file a citation?
We can have him do it tomorrow when he's up there looking at the rats, uh, John, we can, I can certainly ask Rich to do that.
I mean, that is, that is the process for the state, at least with wastewater.
You can see over it from the road?
There's probably oils and gas leaking down that way, too.
There's guaranteed there's oil and gas, and, and that can all be dealt with with the state with DZ, but it has to start at the town level.
Can I ask which property this is?
Right across the street from my-
Right from, across from yours?
Yep.
Where Joe Mayat lived at one time?
Exactly.
I thought there was nobody living there.
No, there hasn't.
They're not there now, they've abandoned it, they live up on-
Where's the septic coming from?
It's coming out of their tank that's in his garage, it's a steel tank, and it's probably overflowing from all the rain and everything else.
He still has multiple animals living there.
It's never been a good system, never, it's not really a, a lu, a legal system, it's a tank in his garage.
He lives in Brandon, and he, I see him, clearly, he brings garbage and puts it on the vehicles in the driveway.
I have pictures to prove it.
Allowed people to live in that property for years, until it's obviously failed to the point where they couldn't live there anymore. And now we're still dealing with it with pigs living in it.
And dogs in the garage.
Pigs living in it?
Pigs are living up there at the house.
They have house dogs there.
I knew, we knew about the dogs.
So, so called, um, um, resident dog in the back.
Peacock?
It was a rescued peacock in the back. It's been in that cage for two and a half years now.
And there was also a coy dog hanging up for longer than three weeks, smelling the body.
Oh, it was months. It was months.
Hanging up on that game pole?
Yep.
Yeah, yes, just hanging with one foot.
That shouldn't be new to anybody, we've been doing that with coy dogs for years, so I know it.
So I'm sorry, Jeff, but just because something's happened in the past and it's been going on for years doesn't make it acceptable, it's also becomes gross negligence when things are not acted upon, and they're reported repeatedly, and things are not taken care of. This is the situation where we're at, where the neighbors continue to call the town, to ask questions, to try to figure things out, and nothing's being done, and this is very concerning, because all of these houses, all of these neighbors are dealing with rats inside their farms, their garages, even getting into their houses. This is a health concern, and it's impacting families and children.
So this is, I, I just, I wanna clear the air on this too, because the, the first time that I was notified by anyone other, other than when we spoke about the dogs last year, the first, the first time that I heard about the, a rat issue was when Mike sent the email, I think it was last Friday, or maybe, and he sent one to Mark and I, and that's what started this recent conversation, and, you know. I have nothing to hide on this, if this was brought up to me before, we'd be, we've been sitting in this room six months ago doing the same thing, you know, it's come to us now, this is the first that I've learned of the rat issue, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this as quickly as we can, but I can't, I can't fix, I don't think anyone on the board can fix what did or didn't get done in the past, but we're here right now, and I am, I am gonna do whatever that we can do to resolve this problem, 'cause I feel bad for you guys, I really do, it's disgusting.
But what about the animals, too?
Well, the animals, so we, there's a couple of places we can call for animals, um, 'cause we have no jurisdiction over ag, ag animals, the dogs, yes, but not the, and that's even questionable now, but, 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 but the, the ag animals has to be through the Department of, well, it's Department of Ag, actually, now, so, um, we can make those calls too, but. And like I said to you folks earlier, like, the problem with this is this, this process is slow, unfortunately, and, but if we can get this health order done, that's gonna speed things up, and let's try to, you know, let's check the, the, the problems off as we go, and I think dealing with the rats first, because this is a public health problem, there's no way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm gonna talk, talk to our Health Officer again tonight and make sure, and I'll go up with him tomorrow, and if we've gotta get someone from the state, we'll get him up there, but, you know, this, that's disgusting, and, well, we need, someone needs to be dealt with.
Behind here, what about your access to that property?
We don't have any.
Right.
You can pretty much see, I'm sorry, pretty much see everything right from the road. You can see the, the sewage, if it, it's almost right behind their mailbox, the neighbor's right there on the hill, it's almost right behind, you can see, it's a pool of green moss.
I, I'm, maybe we have a test kit at wastewater, too, that we can bring up and grab a shot, I mean, we can really see what's coming out of there, too, you know, 'cause it'd be good to know.
Sir, I have a question, can I?
Sure.
Okay, so earlier, it was like probably ten minutes ago, you implied that this was like a judicial matter, not, not a civil or a town matter?
So-
So, how are, you know, how are, how, how are you?
So the zoning issue is definitely, we, like I said, we can start it, it's probably gonna go to court, because unless someone does the right thing and complies, that's our only course of action. The health issue is a totally different thing. That's a, that's a public health- That's a, that's a public health issue, that needs to be acted on immediately. So, we'll see what we can do to make that go away sooner than later and we'll just, you know.
Along with the animal feces and the stuff coming out of their tank, if there's anything left in it besides whatever. The vehicles that are sitting there rotting away, that can be adding to it like John said, gas, and I said the same thing. That can be, and it's all probably flowing right down adjacent to Ray's property and it ends up down in the mush where he kept his, where he had his pigs and his horses just beyond the house on the downhill side. Nothing but a swamp.
Which goes right into our property.
So the funny thing about that is that swamp, that body of water goes down and it actually feeds multiple springs for neighbors' homes.
Yes.
So you tend to essentially have feces going into the water that is gonna be impacting those which probably have never been tested.
At the end of the day, really, again, this starts with a town health officer citation and then we can get other departments in the state involved. I'd love to help, I've got plenty of connections within the state departments that we work with. So we just, we, we need that health citation.
So how about I get ahold of you tomorrow, John, after we go up? If everyone's okay with that? Cause I need Rich to do that first, so, um, and then we can start.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Tell me now if you can't get a water test kit because I know where I can get one.
I bet you do. No, well, we have, I mean, we have to have a water break anyway, except for bacteria and everything, so.
Well, I just said if you don't.
Right.
Or if you can't.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
And getting back to the health issue, his pigs are on the end of his house and I bet you they're not from here to that wall from his well. And who knows if there's any veins running off that anywhere?
Well, yeah. Yeah.
And I tell you, it's bad, it's really bad.
Artie's house, it's right next to his.
He has.
His pigs are just above the well. So Artie lives?
Artie doesn't live there anymore.
He's abandoned it. He's abandoned it.
Lives up past. But that's the well you're speaking of?
Yes, yeah.
Which could very well be connected to everybody else's wells.
Just like Kelly said, I saw him yesterday drive up and unload his truck and put all the garbage on top of one of the cars and on the ground.
And I'll tell you, even just last summer, it was.
And then he's burning.
Where's, where's Artie Junior live?
Joe Myatt's old place.
Above me. Or which?
Joe Myatt's old house.
That's the, that's the property we're talking about, right? And there's nobody living there.
Correct.
Right. So where does he live? He lives up past me, Dan.
And he's bringing the garbage.
He's bringing the garbage up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And his vehicles that he's not, you, that are all damaged and ruined from his high ledge thing. They're all just abandoned on that property. It's a nice word.
Can I go out with you tomorrow? Absolutely, we'll take a bus if you want.
I'd like to recommend all select board members go and look at these three places.
That would be astounding.
I think most of us have, I know.
For sure, yeah.
We've gone by them when the dog issue came in last year.
Yeah, it was up there. We went up there a year ago.
They've gotten worse.
Gotten worse.
Well, we can all go up and look at it.
So, but Jeff and I did talk today and I, you know, we're, like, we're going after more than one property, so. You know, I think it's in the best interest to.
Where's the other one today?
If you wanna take a better look of his property, you have all of our, our permission to go on our property, which is the surrounding field around his property. You have our permission to go on that property.
Right above my driveway, which is twenty-eight, twenty-eight, there's a gate right there.
Yes.
That you can, maybe they'll unlock it for you, you can walk right through that and go down and around and never be on Artie's property.
Right, you'll be on ours. And you'll see the, the trash.
I've got a picture of the back of the property.
Wait.
Yeah, but let me see.
Once a folk sent me, I asked this, John to get pictures to me today on some of the folks who have actually had rats, like true stuff, in their barns and things, so. Um, we've got a bunch of them that came, but we'll take whatever. Um, but Rich and I are gonna go up there tomorrow, I'll give you a call. And we'll, we'll move forward with, we'll at least get this health issue dealt with immediately. But I think we do have to hold an emergency select board meeting once Rich. I'm pretty sure, I've spent a while since I've done that, so.
Yeah, I'm busy all day tomorrow, but I can, Friday afternoon, I can get up there Friday afternoon. Drive by. So, when did the rats start?
Is this something new?
Well, I'm gonna say that my dog got his first one probably four weeks ago during one of the thaws. And then, and the next one was just last week.
Okay, so the rats, cause before it was, it was the dogs and the cars, I mean, it's, I know what the place looks like. I, but that, that particular place didn't have the garbage. The garbage was down by Teresa's, that one down there. That one was like almost buried in garbage. Oh, no, I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure it is, but the garb, so the garbage thing is kind of a new thing at Joe Myatt's old place.
He's doing it to piss everybody off, especially his uncle.
I've seen him come up with his yellow flatbed trailer full of trash.
And he drops it off.
He drops it off at that property.
Then burns it.
I mean, that's illegal right there.
Yeah, it can't burn, it's illegal to burn.
Well, it's illegal to burn it, yeah.
How many animals are there?
Um, he's got the peacock, he's got chickens.
I haven't seen.
Not sure how we did.
Two pigs, right?
Chickens are there as far as I know.
There was three dogs originally.
Four pigs. Well.
And at least two dogs still that I know of.
I'll text Rich tonight.
And they never see the light of day.
That's adorable now.
But he feeds them.
Another, another neighbor that's not here tonight and they're respectful, they have a nice house. Um, in the last probably two months, they caught six rats that came into their house.
Yeah, and the, the straw that broke the camel back, the camel's back for me was my wife taking a picture today at lunchtime of a dead rat sitting in our lawn. We don't even have any animals at our house, so there's no reason for rats to even come up here, but they're spreading.
Well, that's what they do.
Oh, good.
Multiplier like that? Yeah.
I have a question about that coy dog hanging and all the other animals over the years. Once they bring them down, when, where do they put them? Out back? This guy's got pictures of them.
That's where they used to go.
Yeah.
They probably still do.
So rats just love that.
On my property.
I've seen the legs rot right off of them and just lay right there, God bless you.
Just the leg hanging.
And why?
Well, yeah, I mean, I've been by there years ago and deer would be there, I mean, they're. Why shoot them if you're just gonna let them hang there? But anyway, that's, yeah.
Which is against the law, and so.
Not much you can do about that.
You can, you can call a game warden about that, but it's wanton waste.
Actually, didn't we have a game warden trying to fight that with the state?
I'm not sure. Well, that was before it came to light.
Well, we could, we could call Fish and Wildlife too, I mean, might as well.
It's wanton waste, right?
Might as well call everyone we can to see what can happen.
Yep.
Okay.
Fish and Wildlife would be very interested to know if there's gas going down there. Or oil.
Are you texting Rich?
Yeah, sorry, I don't, I don't mean to be texting at the meeting, but I wanted to get word to him because I know he's.
Trailer down by the farm.
Don't know where they are.
Yeah, that one.
That's abandoned.
Oh, so they're not living there either?
I don't think so.
They're living with her mother.
Cause back in, what, twenty-one, twenty-two, they actually made an attempt to clean up for a few days. Well, they, well, well, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't at least an attempt. And I, yeah, yeah, but it didn't last very long.
I would like to say.
With that property, they do not have water, that's what I've been told and I understand is that that property does no longer have water and that's why they abandoned it. And then obviously because of what happened in the past with the other, I don't know if he was a husband or boyfriend, um, with accident with him, but now that that was ever cleaned up in the house, from my understanding still, so.
Suicide.
All of these houses have had kids living in them, kids in our school system.
Is this Aaron?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I'm with John, yes. The one with female on there.
Little kids.
Yeah.
Babies.
So are we, are we asking, I guess, to have the health inspector stop at all three properties?
Well, we might as, we might as well go do a one-stop shopping tomorrow and get it done with and deal with them all at once. If we, if we call all the resources that we can think of, let's make one trip.
Yeah, no, we might just as well.
Thank you.
Cause I know the one, I know the one down by the Teresa's place. I mean, that, the last time I was by there, it's like you barely see the trailer, it's just garbage, just. I mean, and I would think they would have rats there too.
That's the one we've had to move cars out of.
Sure they love it a lot, so.
I would like to say Robbie Stocker has tried to clean up his place and he's getting there. He looks really good considering what he was.
And I mean, it was bad when his dad had it and he's cleaned it up, yes.
Is that one of the three properties?
That's one of the three.
No.
Oh, it isn't one of the three?
Where's the third?
Robbie Stocker, um.
Cause I thought Stocker was one of the ones that had.
Was, but you guys contacted him, they told him to clean up.
Oh, and he did, okay, okay.
Where's the third one?
We're, we're talking to.
The third one is Artie's.
Their parents.
Forrest Junior and then Wayne Forrest the third.
Right.
Okay.
So where is the fathers, which one, how place is that?
Wayne, Artie Forrest?
In the middle.
It's in the middle, if you go past Teresa's.
There's three on Fire Hill, they all look the same.
No, I've, no, I've been there, but it's.
There's a house for sale like next to.
Is it the one that's way to, it's kinda like down off the road in a hole?
It's a trailer, and you can't miss it, you cannot miss it.
No, no, but it, but it's far, that one's farther from the road, so it's harder to tell it's how bad it is.
Yes.
Yeah, it's still.
Right next to the brook, yes.
And it was about five years ago before Dave was here. Um, and there were, he had a pile of air conditioners, gas tanks, and I don't know what else, but you could see it from the road. It was there one day and it was gone the next, but there was a nice dirt spot where he buried everything.
Oh.
So to add to that, um, they had their old, uh, trailer mobile home there. They actually pulled it down from the site and they drove their log skater through it and they left it there. And then they brought in the new mobile home. Now, this was a long time ago, but that other mobile home, all that shit's still there. So, and so the whole purpose with Teresa, why she signed the property over to them because she was worried that she was gonna get in trouble with their mess. So she went through the whole proceedings with signing that property over to them for nothing, just to make sure that she was gonna get in trouble. Now you gotta understand too, that there are all these problems are happening elsewhere with these other houses, but the neighbors are afraid to speak up because of the repercussions from these people. So I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that that's why they probably haven't heard from some of the other neighbors as well, so.
Okay.
I was actually threatened twice by one of Artie's Junior's friends.
If that happens to anyone.
Oh, I went to the police.
Call PD immediately.
Went to the police, absolutely. I have, I have it.
I think you better up call the state police.
They won't respond.
They don't respond.
They have to my house.
Yeah.
Well, you're lucky.
They just didn't last night to one, I know that for a fact, so.
Okay. All right, so we have an action for tomorrow.
Yep, yep, so I will, as soon as I hear from Rich, I'll, I'll let you two know and we'll go.
Glad to go.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
If you're lucky and you go there around noon, Artie might be there dropping more garbage off.
That's usually the time?
Twelve oh five, he's there.
Twelve oh. Well, then, might be time, that might be the time.
Quarter twelve.
Lunch break, I just see him there and eat his dogs once a day during that time. Cause I live adjacent to his property, so I can hear him. Oh, yes. Truck rubbing and stuff, he does that and he spins out in front of our driveway. People he thinks are, you know, taunting him or whatever, or bullying him, although we're being bullied.
Right.
But, um, yeah, so it's, it's definitely that time.
Well, we'll see what we can do to try to, if that works, once I hear from Rich.
And one other thing, if there's ever another meeting for this, if you could give more notice, because I contacted a lot of people and they couldn't make it tonight.
Well, so this wasn't even on the agenda, that's why you're in public comment.
This was really spur of the moment only because Mike had been emailing us and then John had called me today and said, you know, let's get this on the record tonight and the folks can come, cause I real, I want, I wanted it from the board.
To hear all of this too.
So they know what's going on, so, yeah, I was sorry for the short notice, but we wanted to, we wanted. When we heard about the, the rats, I wanted to make sure that we can do something with on this one.
Yeah, that's, that's a health issue.
Not okay.
Yes.
So for the record, for board of adjustment, if you guys can't do anything or the town, not you guys, but the town can't do nothing, I would like my taxes reduced, please? Because it's affecting my value of my home with these rats and these, these three neighbors.
Why don't we try to get rid of the rats for?
To get rid of the rats.
You're opening up another whole can of worms.
That's a whole different process.
The worms are a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So dealing with that, though, you're pretty, pretty sure, close to positive that that's where they're coming from?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, everyone has a pretty, um, clean house. I, I, you know, I think we all know each other a little bit.
I think if you see it, Dan.
Not really friends, but acquaintances.
I haven't been by there in a while, but it was never.
Oh, yeah. Sadly, I went by there last week to visit some other property.
Like to get some.
Please go by there.
It was pretty, it's bad.
I sent about nine of them to him today.
I have some that came today, so I can share those with you, but we can certainly.
All right.
It, it's, pictures don't do it justice, unfortunately.
I don't know, any place.
You can't smell the pictures.
Oh, we have a few other repeat offenders. Um, yes, we had one that we dealt with last year on the other side of town that was.
Other side of town.
But they actually worked to get into compliance and I know that Rich has gone out a couple of times to say, hey, you know, you're starting and so.
Starting to do it again.
It's, it's, it's more common than you think unfortunately, but it sucks when you live next door to it.
I don't mind helping people out, they need help.
Yeah, right.
But this is ridiculous.
They don't want it.
So they've had enough opportunities through the years from what even Jeff was telling me today that we, we need to.
That trailer by Teresa's, I'm pretty sure the town cleaned that up one time with the town dump trucks.
Right.
Tucked all that stuff out of there, if I remember correctly, that was what, three, four, or five years ago.
It's amazing. Looks like it just like, it's just got worse.
I think it's when it first, yeah, you remember that.
Into the right of way.
Yep.
That's where.
If there's cars in the right of way, legally told.
Yeah, yeah, the cars are full of stuff now too on that one, so.
Okay.
It's bad. All right.
There has been, uh, I'll use the word, a town professional person that had visited the property that we're talking about mainly, right across from my house. Um, and he sided very heavily against another property owner that was complaining about Artie. Um, name not to be mentioned because I don't wanna stick my food up my own butt. But, uh, he's a pretty high up person. His office is very close to this one. How's that? And it's not you.
I'm like, what did I do?
He said it's not right.
Of course not.
So.
Oh, all right, he's okay, he's, he's.
Well, now, you know, the board has, knows we're gonna take action and that's what we needed them to do was hear all of this so that everybody's on the same page.
And this health issue is a whole.
And Mark knows too, cause I did talk to Mark today, so. And, and I know that Mike's been emailing, including Mark in the emails too, so.
And the health issue is a whole different issue than the dogs or the, any of the other stuff. I mean, this is hopefully something that we can do something.
We have to do something about this.
We have to, yes, yeah, you can.
It's a public health issue.
Doing that.
So I get what you're saying as far as this is a public issue. The dogs aren't, you know, miniscule though. That's, that is a big issue.
Oh, no, no, I know.
But, but this is a.
This is definitely bigger.
There's a lot more teeth to be involved with a health issue than, cause the dog issues, he says this, I mean, there's, you know. It makes it a lot more difficult.
But, but there's, there's issues with what towns can do with dogs too, because they, you know, what they. What we can go after is if they don't have food, shelter, or if they look abused.
Are they registered?
They are.
We, we looked into that.
That last year and they are.
Yeah, I remember that last year. So that's the one thing, like, you know, again, like, we have Vermont statute that we rely on to do our job and when it doesn't give us.
The teeth.
The teeth. I'm sure Steven remembers when we had this conversation up the road about an animal control ordinance too, like, it was bad because there was a big seizure of animals up there. Remember that?
It doesn't apply to Florence area. I thought it was just the town of Pittsburgh, the.
You just got a different. So it does, it does apply, but if you look at like the animal control laws that we can follow, it's. And it only, it only pertains to what dogs, like household pets and like hybrid wolves or something.
It's very bizarre how it's written.
And they can't be in their own feces, which I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's a neglect. Yep, um, so. Well, we'll see what we find tomorrow and hopefully it's something worth grabbing a hold of and making it better.
So if you need Ray to unlock the gate for you to get in there, if you need to.
Do you wanna write your number on the signing sheet, Ray, before you leave and then I'll call you? I'll give you a call. Okay, alright, I'll give you a call then and we'll plan a field trip up there.
Alright, well, thank you all for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
And hopefully, something happens.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean.
They won't be overnight though, unfortunately.
What was that?
As they won't be overnight.
No, it won't, it won't.
No, but the health issue part will move a lot faster than any of the other stuff.
Somebody forgot their water bottle. Yelled Greg's name.
Hey Greg, Greg.
Water bottle.
Greg left his water bottle in here.
Oh, he left his gloves too.
He hasn't been doing too well this week.
At least you, you didn't leave your body here at least.
He hasn't been doing well at all this week. I don't know. Started Monday night.
Like I said, I was on the wrong page.
You were.
Like usual.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, um, where we come, come out of public comment, I just wanna say welcome to Dan. Which I did say at the beginning of the meeting.
Actually, technically you didn't mess up because it goes under review results of town meeting.
Oh shoot, there you go. Look at that, just slid right into that, okay. Uh, anything, what other, uh, results would we like to review from town meeting? Um, bond vote passed. I don't have the exact numbers, do you?
No, but I know they were, it was like four something to two passed and then local option was just the opposite.
The opposite, yes.
I had the number somewhere, didn't I?
Yeah, you wrote them down.
Yeah, it was pretty much flip flopped.
Yeah, it was kinda bizarre really. I mean, they. Wanted the, wanted the sewer line, but they didn't want the money to pay for it.
Yeah, they, I don't think they understand what it actually is. It's our fault for not really.
That was school budget numbers that I sent you.
So.
So in one percent option, did not pass.
Did not, no.
It was about two to one. I don't have the exact numbers for that, but two to one.
So, uh, one thing I just wanna kind of forewarn you when we, for the next meeting, just because I, we didn't know this, you know, what was gonna be the outcome. I think we need to have a, a water and sewer discussion on funding and what we wanna do for. Two pending projects and looking forward to what we've gotta do on Route seven. Down the road that's not cheap, you know, we, we, we need to find funding for that and I think that was what the plan was for the option was to have it cover that, so. And then it wouldn't cost, you know, it wouldn't be in a user fee or tax bill, so, but for the next meeting.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
Do we, um, has Helen compiled, do we have actual numbers on things so we can like put that out there?
I don't know.
Can we get that soon, you think?
She might have them hung up out front. I, I didn't see anything today, so.
No, I just was, yeah, in case people ask. Alright, we don't have, uh, do we have, we don't have any appointments to fill. Elected offices on note, cause all that was just school board that's out of our jurisdiction. Um.
We didn't have a rep from Pittsburgh on the.
No, there was.
Yeah, no, that was, it was actually kinda scary to look at that ballot, how many.
Pretty much a blank page.
Nobody running for positions.
I know. Okay, so there's no other, um, appointments other than the ones that we're waiting up, we're gonna.
Just for what you've got for the.
For next, next meeting, okay. Um, alright, vehicle for first response. So there was two at Pittsburgh Auto.
So we had done, we've actually done a little bit of, you know, this was out of our meetings when we talked about, you know, that the vehicle for first responses. So get Dan caught up. It's not inspectable anymore. It's a.
It's been a mess for a while.
Yeah, it's a ninety suburban. It's, you know, it's just in bad shape and. So, we started talking about looking for a new one and you can't even get a, a new one for, you can't get them. So, we did have a line on one that was all done up in New York, but we got pictures sent and, you know, it had light bars and everything on it, but it was starting to rust under rockers the same way. So actually Tom had said, you know, there's a Dodge Durango down the road and I'd already looked at the Explorer down there Expedition. So we went back and, and looked at it and Bruce said, the Durango's in really nice shape actually. Um, it's one solid color, so it'd be easy to put decals on. We'll have to order new light bars, cause the light bars are too old on that too, but. This is, you know, looking at used vehicles, we're just thinking it's a more economical way to get them a vehicle that's safe to drive and. You know, it doesn't leave town, so we can probably get ten years out of it and at that price, that's, you know, that was our thinking anyway, so.
Yeah, and this is un, well under that what we had increased for.
I think we were looking. Well, and there's money in the, there's money in the capital fund for.
Yeah, there's.
That was maybe sixty thousand dollars. I, I, I can't, but so yeah, this is well under what we would. Had talked about spending, so.
So this is a first response vehicle?
Yeah.
But they don't transport, right?
They don't.
Right, so it carries like the backboards and the equipment and stuff.
Backboards, their junk kits and all that stuff.
So their stuff will fit in there.
That's where we measure it to make sure that the backboard would fit in the back and it does fit, but. Yeah, well, how many calls did they have last year? It was like four hundred. Was it two hundred they responded to or it's?
Two, I think it was two hundred.
It was also discussed that they only mainly have staffing overnight.
Exactly.
From dinnertime to work time the next day.
Sometimes they're not even responding anymore.
Even at night.
Yeah, so it's sometimes you wait for an ambulance to get here. Way understaffed right now. And that's happening everywhere. Not just Pittsburgh.
But this looks like a, a more efficient way to get into a reliable vehicle, so. Um, you know, we did look around in some other places. I, like I called Gardner to see if he had anything, cause you know, he's always, they had just sold them. Like the day before and, and actually someone said, you know, they've had one, a buddy of mine said, Dave, they've had one down there and, yeah, it was gone. They took it to auction that day.
How much will it cost to, um, put the light bars on it?
Uh, what are they? Is it?
Uh, you, you need to buy a new light bar for it probably. You're a thousand bucks to buy a new light.
But you have to make sure the wiring harness will, it will take it.
And not catch on fire.
I wasn't referring to that, but yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's kind of an important issue.
I'm sure their siren is probably still usable, uh, to take it out of the old rig and that one, that's.
I'll bring them what we have for quotes and that too, cause you know, we'll have to get decals done too and we've got a guy that comes here too, but we've got enough decal places.
You're looking at twenty-five hundred, three thousand bucks to probably equip it. Extra. You get out, you'll get out of it less than twenty-five grand.
That's probably sounds.
Is there a radio in the car?
Oh, yeah, they, they'll swap that.
Will it, is it compatible?
It should be.
There any salvage value for the old one?
Yeah, three hundred bucks at the junkyard. Yeah, I guess, I think the frame's starting to rot out on it.
I can ask if they wanna give us anything for it, but I'm sure that they won't. We just might, well, you know what, we could just put it out for bid and see if someone wants to buy it, but if it's not inspectable.
So what was, it's an old suburban, right?
It's an old suburban, yeah.
You know, there, I, I would put it out. I mean, there's no, there's no expense to putting it out because there's people that love to restore those things. And somebody might pay you five hundred or a thousand bucks for it.
Well, we can put it out to bid, that's fine.
I, I would just.
On the paper, yeah.
And that, you know, cause like I say, there's people that love those old square bodies.
Once we get the stuff off of it, we'll do that. That's, it's not, it's not costing us any money, so.
That's the kinda thing they build those overlanders out of.
It's not necessarily the odometer. It's the hours on the engine because it stays running.
Police car. Doesn't have any miles, but it's got hours and hours.
First response, not so much because they, they go to college at their boom boom and, you know, they're even done. Normally those fairly quick calls. Fire, they, you can be hours sitting there, I don't.
The, the board recognized, like, if you don't mind me speaking about, does the board recognize when we're doing budget season that first response really needed to get updates, some stuff?
That was in the.
And, yeah, and we did it, well, actually the fire department was just doing the same thing. We heard Volsha was out and about, so we had the league come down and do a inspection before. And we found some out of compliance stuff there too, so, you know, we're, gotta keep stuff up to date, cause paying for it's way cheaper than getting fined for it. And that worked out good, cause we found some things in the fire department that we didn't realize were issues, so, you know, it worked out well, but. Yeah, so, um, do you guys wanna, uh, uh, they need a motion?
Well, I, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and buy this, this Dodge Durango. And not to exceed for a total cost of twenty-five thousand getting it equipped. That should cover it without coming back.
Oh, so this has not been purchased yet?
No, that's what we're doing right now.
Sitting right down the road, so.
So I, I stopped and looked at both of them the other day and the Ford, I don't know, that's some rust issues underneath and looked like it'd been beat up pretty good. Seats were ripped and this thing. The, the Ford did look fairly decent.
I guess I, I would agree to that, under the condition you get that Durango up on a lift and somebody who knows what they're looking at, look at it. And make sure it's not. Because you can look under them and, oh yeah, it looks pretty good and then you get under there and you got cross members that are rotted and whatever. So.
Ninety-five, potentially ninety-five thousand miles on it?
I mean, they, I mean, it's a different year, but my son's had two hundred and something thousand miles on it.
One of our cruisers, cause we have a couple of those, one of them has a hundred and forty-seven thousand miles on it or something. It's pretty high.
Yeah, no, they're, they're reasonably dependable. They're not bad rigs.
That's not a high mileage.
But I do, somebody needs to look at it and make sure.
Yep, no, that makes sense.
It's amazing what you don't see just looking under it.
We can go on a field trip too if you want. We can bring you to, like, I mean, really, like, I'm not being sarcastic about that.
No, that's fine. It's, it's just me finding the time with actually working for a living for a change. Not self-employed anymore, so I don't have the luxury of doing what I want.
I could probably find someone that knows that stuff that I could go down and take a look.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, Greg, um, town crew. I mean, I would trust his judgment on that.
Well, and Sean was a body guy forever too.
Sure, true, yep.
Well, and I see, so he's, I see that this, um, he's giving you to the twenty-second to make a final decision?
Spoke to Gardner.
I did.
Did he say he could probably find one?
He, well, we, I told him we're looking and that was three, four weeks ago, so I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
So.
So we had.
Voting to, to purchase this at this time?
Well, that's, the motion was on the table. You've either gotta blow it down or do something.
Right, so the motion was to purchase this, not to exceed twenty-five thousand with. You know, equipping it, outfitting it.
Contingent on somebody looking.
Contingent on, uh, on the inspection.
Adding to that, yes.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
So any fir.
Contingent on inspection.
Right.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
I would, I would just say in further discussion, have we really looked around for anything else or not?
So, we have been. And like, I've had, I've had some of the guys on highway looking for stuff and. You know, like, that's why, I can't, I think Chad or Tyler brought me the one that we found in New York that had all this stuff.
Yeah, I know, we've been looking for a while.
It's, and we call, I called dealers to see what we could find for new and they're like, if we get them, you don't wanna pay for them. So, and then that's, I called Gardner, please, well, you know, and he's like, gee, that's when he just said he, they took that one to auction that day, so. We've been looking around and.
This vehicle's not equipped for that. Have we looked around?
Yeah, the one we got is, it's a regular suburban, it was a regular car. These, these aren't like a police car.
In, in your search before, you weren't looking for an outfitted vehicle?
We did, we found one.
Okay.
Are you talking about the original?
The original, no, are you talking about this one?
The replacement vehicle. Have we looked around for other vehicles like this, used and aren't outfitted yet?
They're not out there, yeah, they're not out there.
So this is what got me to go down to Pittsburgh. And when we started, when I started, when we wanted, we're looking for new to see the prices, it wasn't a vehicle that was all done up for.
No, no.
We'd have to get that, get it and then do all the outfits, all the stuff ourselves.
It's like we buy our cruisers, same thing. We get a plain car and we put the light bars and sirens and all that crap on them. No, they're, they come with a police package. They don't need a police package on a first response vehicle. They don't have that runtime and all that, the high speed brakes and all that.
I mean, we can continue the search and I'm sure we can find more and spend more or less or whatever, but, you know, with what. With what we've been doing, I'm, I guess it's been almost two months since we started this, so.
Before the first of the year.
Yeah.
When we were doing.
Yeah, I was gonna say during budget season, we knew that the current vehicle wasn't gonna pass inspection.
That wasn't prior to the search, but you seem satisfied that. You know, having looked around, that this is something to pursue, so.
One thing too that I was, I was talking, I was talking to Tom about, like, it's local too and we can get it serviced right in town, so. Uh, that has a value to it as we're, we're learning, we're talking earlier, we're learning with. When we gotta take two guys to take a vehicle somewhere, that's money lost, you know, and it's not, you know, it's, it's, it sucks and nobody wants to do it.
And it's well within the budget.
Oh, yeah, no, you've got the money. It's in there. And no delivery fee, yeah, exactly.
All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Yeah, problem is that one never did fall off.
I don't think it did either. That's, we were told it fell off. That was a bunch of.
That'll be a learning experience too.
Well, the, I, so I just gotta tell you something real quick about that. So we had an issue with that truck again.
Again?
So that Chad was plowing with it and he got done plowing and it just lost power. He's like, it was, that's happened before, so. He noticed that where the air filter is in the front, it's like exposed. And so the air filter was soaking wet, so. Horrible design for a truck that does municipal work, so he got a new air filter in it. He just put some duct tape on the grill to cover it. I haven't had a problem since.
This is international, right?
Duct tape fixes everything.
Yeah, and.
Remember back in our days when international trucks were the best?
Cause they were simple.
So they do, they got a cover that goes over and we're gonna get it, cause we'll have to have it for plowing next or else it's gonna take them to fall off them, but. So far, knock on, you know, it's been, it's been working, so.
Alright, let's, uh, last final item. Uh, anybody have any questions on the orders of which in addition to the, um. Eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. We had an ad, additional warrant of ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seven cents. Anyone have any questions on any of those?
I do, uh, it's eight twenty-five Earl's Truck Repair. There's a, almost forty-one hundred dollars and twenty, roughly twenty-four hundred dollars. Water, damage, plow harness. What is that?
So, what's the, so, this was the water truck, right? So we had, the, the, the harness actually caught on fire. I don't know, a month ago. It was installed wrong when it was done by the company that installed it when the truck was purchased. So they had to.
So which truck is this?
This is water, um.
Five, wasn't it?
No, five was the Thaiway truck from the last meeting that had that, the, the stuff done. It's, I'm trying to think of which truck it is. The, it's the, the pickup truck that's down at wastewater, the one that has the.
Oh, wastewater.
Yeah.
The school bus?
Not the.
Yeah, the school bus.
Is it the school bus?
It's not the, it's not the five fifty, it's the other truck. I can't remember.
No, it's Sean's truck, the water department.
Water, yeah. Supercab.
The school bus.
Everybody in town calls it the school bus. Well, that's what I hear.
Okay. So, the school bus, I guess.
Well, no, I just, so, that truck isn't that old.
No, it's not.
So this is, this isn't warranted in any way?
No, it wasn't. Well, it's old, it's out of warranty, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but we. We've had two issues with two after, you know, installers with stuff and we, there's one left that we're gonna make sure we use for. Moving forward, because you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
Well.
So this was a piece of equipment installed on the truck?
So when they put.
The wiring?
Yeah.
Was installed improperly?
It was not grounded properly and something hopped out of the box and it shorted it out and caught it on fire.
When, when was it installed?
I don't know how long.
Long time ago?
I don't know what year that truck is.
It's three, four years old, probably.
Yeah.
It's at least a couple of years.
Yeah, it's at least two years old.
I think it's gotta be three.
Could be three.
Probably out of the three year.
Maybe three, yeah.
Yeah, well, this would have been.
Basic warranty.
The aftermarket, after manufacturer stuff, cause it would've come from the people that installed that. The aftermarket, after manufacturer stuff, because it would have come from the people that installed the after.
Who installed the body on, the steel body on it? Oh, okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
So this was the same vehicle, these two Earl's?
So one, one went early and I can't, I, I'd have to look at the invoice, I can't remember everything that was done to it, we've had so many truck issues lately. Let me pull out the invoice, Dan.
Well, I mean may not be that important.
Well, it's just, well, it's just easier, because then I'm not trying to make things up either.
So, just my question, is this two different vehicles and?
No, same vehicle. So. One started, because there was a time lapse here too, so this, I apologize, this is the F three fifty Super Duty one ton, so, the-
It's a dump truck.
That's a dump truck, then, right?
So this is the one for-
Wait, no, three fifty, no, the dump trucks are fives.
Right.
Fours are fives.
So this is the one for the Ford Grand that started, this was back in January. So, truck died when driving, won't restart, no crank, no power, slept flat, flat beds to bring hooked computer up, could not communicate with any modules, performed several OEM tests, removed battery junction box cover, found issue with fuse tabs for the strobe lights LED because truck did not come with upfitter switches. Had to replace battery junction box, install an updated cover and the entire exterior light accessories, found the plow harness was not wired in properly. So they disconnected that. Um, replaced the main chassis harness and reassembled truck engine functions that shit at this time. Cause customer contacted about adding upfitter switches and wiring, so that was in January and then and we had an issue, I had to go back a week later, uh, changed overhead console so that it would have the upfitter switches. Pulled headliner, installed relays and harness to plug in accessory wiring as they had for lights and plowed. Wired in plugs instead of cutting wires.
They cut the wires?
Apparently. So now it has the right harness in it.
Okay. Who did the original install?
That was done-
Um, a place in Heinsberg.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on, on the orders?
That was my only one.
All right, we can get a sign in.
Okay. We're not discussing the Ford, um, can you pass that to-
Yeah, because he's sleeping.
Those were the two that we were looking at.
That one, Tom went and looked at that, had some rust starting already on it, so.
So this was for the same vehicle, yeah, 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 same.
Yeah, those are our two choices.
Still kind of boring, isn't it, Stephen?
You guys, you know, it is like, it's so nice, there's like, there's no drama down here.
We try.
Occasionally, but it's pretty, pretty-
This is the most drama I've seen in this room.
Yeah.
Usually there's very, not much.
Weird story, just a couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes up the road, yeah, you know.
Um, I was told before we couldn't, while we were signing.